Roll call, please.
Mr. Meseregi.
Here.
Mr. Siski.
Here.
Mrs. Alessa? Mr. Cora?
Present.
Mr. Kramer?
Here.
Mr. Kearney?
Here.
Mr. Gopak?
Here.
Mr. Mercy?
Here.
Mr. Mariana?
Present.
Thank you. Mr. Seltzer, any recognitions tonight?
No, but we would like to make one adjustment to the agenda for tonight. We'd like to remove action discussion, I'm sorry, remove under the superintendent's report, under the consent agenda 6.12, approve varsity news network agreement. We'd like to remove that from the agenda.
Thank you. At this time, if anybody's in the audience and would like to step up and make a comment or step forward, give us your name and address.
Ms. Porter.
Hi, everybody. Do I still get my name under wraps?
Yeah.
I just want to make sure the stuff's all the same. I'm Pina Paletti. I live at 96 Cypress Drive, and I'm here today to talk about the Education Foundation. I recently became a member of that board when another board member had to step away. So for the folks that aren't familiar with the foundation, I thought that perhaps I'll give you just a couple of quick little facts, not much. So the mission is to recognize and reward exceptional academic student achievement for personal growth and to promote high-quality innovative instruction. So in the past few years, the foundation has given over $20,000 to teachers in the form of gift grants that they apply for that have an emphasis on stimulating innovative teaching ideas and new learning opportunities for the students. Also, $14,000 has been given to the students who apply for scholarships, and there are five different categories they can apply for scholarship in. One is exceptional academic achievement, significant academic or personal growth, attending a technical or two-year school, the Dr. Sarah Tambucci Scholarship, and the CVCFS Central Blood Bank Scholarship. Additionally, you may not know this, $33,000 is going to be the back of the district for the superintendent for programs that he selects. So our annual fundraiser is a trivia night, and it takes place Saturday, March 24th, at 6:15 PM at the head of our choir hall. For those of you who have been and maybe haven't been back for a while, you should know that the new format is fun, fast, and it's streamlined, and there's great questions, great challenges, and you know, tease up all those useless facts we have in our heads. And so, and well, it is a fundraiser, of course. It is an opportunity for all of us to come together as a community to support our teachers and our students. So I personally have room at my table, and I invite any and all to join me on March the 24th, and I left some flyers up there for you guys, just if you need the site to sign up or whatever. There's also something there for sponsorship. If you know a business that would like to be a sponsor this evening, you can do that as well. So thank you so much for listening, and I hope to see you all on the plane. Thank you.
May I be, I hope I'm not stepping in front of anybody. Yeah, my name's Bob Prior. I appeared here once before about attempting to solicit the support of the school district directed at PennDOT to point out the importance of the traffic congestion problem on Washington Pike. This is 40, 50 years. I have some data here I'll give you later that will explain a little bit more about elevating your level of knowledge about this stuff. But I had an opportunity about a month ago of having to make a request through the Pennsylvania Department of Open Records to get some information from PennDOT about an issue, I think the shaking problem. But at any rate, submitted some confidential information that I gave PennDOT engineer, was released to the public, or I should have released to some original officials who recorded it, publicized it, ended up at a public meeting, and was televised for next month, but to my advantage. But at any rate, I'd like to just mention the fundamentals as I recognize this. School costs like the municipal cost, that's really right there over the next few years. You're in the middle of a $91 million construction. The tax revenues from your business districts are more important to the school district and the community than the tax revenues from residents and the community of obviously from the residential loans. Excuse me. The importance of that to you would be important to important to PennDOT. I'll give you a brief letter in a couple of days that just indicate simply that you're because of your concern for the tax revenue production in your business districts and because it's been paralyzed for the past 35 to 40 years, it affects you directly, not indirectly. And I might mention, we had two public opinion polls done, one just two years ago, the other about 15 years ago. Because of the traffic congestion, 50% of the people living in a five-mile radius around the Collier, Birdsville, Safed, Scott Business District have been detouring around the area. Ever since I-79 was built around 65, then 50,000 consumer motors today go for Route 19 going through Mont Levon and opposite St. Clair, and going through Safed, which one? It was a very important economic change, and we haven't taken advantage of it tonight. It would be great if the recognized intellectuals in the region with the school board would offer your support to try and get some of the things someone is doing to get that problem solved, all right? I'll just give this to Jeff, and maybe you can add to it. Thanks. Thank you.
Hi, Michael Steinhardt.
Evening.
Good evening. I don't know if I'm doing this correctly, it's my first time doing this.
That's okay.
Okay, so I was here to talk about school safety.
Nicole, did you give us your address?
I'm sorry, 1644 Silvieu Drive, Pittsburgh, 815243.
Thank you.
So I'm here to talk about school safety. I do have some questions about it. I know there was a meeting last evening in regards to school safety, so I don't know if this is the time that I ask my questions, or is that at the end? Right now? Okay.
And here's, so you know, the format, Nicole, you can ask a question, but it's actually supposed, this is a comment area by the public, so we may not answer them, but you're really supposed to be making a comment.
Okay.
So the board's not required to answer, but we will certainly listen to your questions.
Okay. Okay, sounds good. So some of the questions that we kind of, some of us came up with, and as well as myself, from yesterday's meeting was, how many children are currently enrolled in the school district K through 12? How many resource officers per student? So how many are utilized? So is it, you know, one, one resource officer per 300 students, or what is that ratio? Who is manning the cameras that are currently installed, if there are any? I know that they are apparently linked to the Collier Township Police Department, but is there a police officer who is watching them at all times? Is there somebody in the schools that's watching them? So that is a question that myself and a lot of parents do have. Has the school district considered metal detectors? I am aware, according to the meeting yesterday evening, that the school district is already over budget from a safety perspective. That's what we were informed of.
We didn't say over budget, we just, we just said what the budget was.
What the budget was. Okay, I'm sorry, I must have heard that incorrectly. So then my next question was, how are we affording more resource officers in order to have budgets? I'll start that question. And then, how many times a year is each grade reviewing safety drills? So is that a fire drill, as well as any type of lockdown drill? I am aware of the Scott Township Police Department working with other schools, so for example, Saint Simon and Jude Preschool, where they come in and they've done a lockdown training with them. They have taped off the room where they cannot still, a police officer stands in the door and looks in the room, and they tape off the room where they cannot see the teachers or the students, and that tape stays on the floor. Is that something that this school district has implemented, or are they considering doing that, having maybe Collier come through, look at the, look in each door, tape off where students and teachers could go, where if there was a situation of an active shooter, they would not be able to be seen? I was also told that the wrong locks were installed on the doors. I don't know if it's in the middle school or whatever the case is, and they were told to tie it down with a buckle or a shoelace. I mean, me personally, I don't really feel that that's very secure, but...
I don't think the conversation was wrong locks, it was just part of the Alice, Alice training.
Okay.
And that is part of it?
Okay.
Part of the Alice training is, yes, you lock the door, but you also barricade it.
Okay.
Because sometimes people can get in just to lock the door, but if you barricade a door, that prevents, takes time, so that person most likely would give up, move to another room.
Yeah.
So it's, it's not that we don't lock the doors and locks don't work, it's just we want to do more than just lock the doors.
Okay.
And when you go through the training, they tell you, look at all the video options, such as a network board or a string or whatever, use that to lock from the inside, and that's where you might, because there are actually YouTube videos that show that, where you lock from the inside.
Okay.
And then for fire drills, it's required by law that all the schools do a fire drill per law.
Okay.
All buildings.
Okay, yep. So I did know the, the fire drill, and I just know from like a lockdown drill perspective. I have a child in the middle school, as well as the high school, and then I'll have a child going to the primary school next year. My middle school student and my high school student have not had any type of lockdown drill this year. So I've asked them, like, what would they do if somebody came into the school with a gun, and their answers were, I don't know, look at my teacher. So, you know, I just feel as though I get that the teachers might be doing this training, but I think that the children need to participate too, so that they know what to do in that situation, so that everything, you know, we're not putting anybody in danger. I just have a concern, what, the reason why I brought this up is, myself personally, I actually walked into the middle school without the doors being locked, in the middle of the day. I walked right through that first set of doors and then the second set of doors. No teacher, no administration, nobody in the administration, nothing. I was here for a meeting with my son's teachers. I walked back out through the doors and went into the school office. Nobody stopped me. So that kind of...
When was that? Can I ask when that was?
Probably November. So that just kind of raised a flag for me that, you know, there might be some lack of security issues here, and then I did hear other parents who were bringing that up as well, that they just walked right into the school with nobody asking them why they were here. So those are some of the questions that I do have. I just want to make sure, you know, that it's on the record, that I'm here stating that I do have concerns about the safety in the school districts. I don't know if anybody's willing to answer any of the additional questions that I asked, but...
We're going to talk about that later in the meeting.
Okay.
I hope we will be able to address most of it, if not all.
Okay.
Thanks for coming, David.
Thank you.
Thanks for sharing that.
Hi.
Hey.
I'm Renee Gordon, I live at 369 Kane Boulevard in Scott. First of all, I'd like to thank you for adding advanced English back into the curriculum. My daughter is so happy. I just wanted to discuss two issues tonight briefly. First of all is accountability on the teachers' part. I don't know if this is something that I would discuss with, like, a union rep when it comes to, like, I don't know when negotiations for new contracts are, but it just drives me crazy that some teachers do not put their grades in until the end of the nine weeks. I don't know how you, you're creating the papers, just stick them in the computer system, because it's not fair to kids who, like, you know, my son, who is not the best, I think he's a good student, he just doesn't do any homework. So that comes into play. And also, if there, I was hoping there could be like a timeline, if, you know, they have a test on a Monday, like, three days given, so they can have their grades back, but sometimes it's like two weeks, and that's not fair to a student, who's studying and doing extracurricular and sports, you know, they're managing their time to get to study, so could the teacher manage their time to get grades back in a timely manner?
I get you.
Okay. Secondly, my son, who I come talk about a lot, his typical day, he's here from 7:30 to 12:30. He comes home for 20 minutes for quick lunch, he goes to Pittsburgh Musical Theater, 1:30 to 5:00, and tonight he's at rehearsal for Legally Blonde, 5:30 to 10:00. Sometimes he stays at PMT, 5:30 to 10:30 for rehearsals, he's doing a show for, and then, you know, two minutes for a walk. So he's busy, and he loves musical theater. So when he came home for lunch today, this dejected manner, what's wrong, he said, guess who was at our rehearsal for Legally Blonde last night? I don't know who. I'm not going to say his name, but the kid that tweeted about him last year about beating him up, who, Maddie had to change class, had to get out of acting class last year, they had to change his schedule because this student just bullied him. He was there, now, my son doesn't know if he's being, if he's playing an instrument for the show, or if he was just there last night playing his instruments. But if that kid is back from college, and in my son's senior year, musical theater show, that's wrong. That is wrong for my son to be upset, like, this one show he gets without this kid torturing him, and there he gets back in the show. So if he is in it, which I get, and my son didn't know if he was just there for the evening, who would have okayed that? Now, I mean, does Giffen just have that much control? Yep, I want this person, this person to be in the pit, and no, no one, she doesn't have to answer to anyone, because that's not right. It's his senior year, and he has one grade, should not have this kid reading that as well. So that's, I would just like to know, you know, if it was Mr. Myers who okayed it, and he doesn't know anything that's going on with all this situation last year with my son, I, I don't know, or, or again, did she not have to ask anyone? But I just, you know, it kind of comes back to the accountability. It just seems like some coaches, or like, they just get to make these decisions on their own, and there has to be someone they're accountable to. It's kind of feel like there might be a communication breakdown between when parents come and discuss things with you, and then they get to the correct person, in this case, whoever she had to ask permission to, if she had to. I hope not. But I just think it really stinks that if he is playing his instrument for the four nights of the musical, he's here every night this week and next week, like, my son's the one that kind of gets rude. Thank you.
Thank you, Renee.
Yeah, mine's just a comment. Okay. I'm Rita Mansky, I live on 710 Ho Street. Why can't we have a microphone here? We can't hear anything that they're saying. I'm loud, so you all hear me, I'm sure. So, and I just want to say that kudos to the workers outside that worked in all this weather, and it's a job well done out there, and that's just a thank you to everyone. But we need somebody to be able to hear. Scott always hears good, right, Scott? Yes, you do. So that's all I would say, and thank you to, for everything. That's it.
Great comment, and, you know, this is, this is noodles.
Oh, boy.
So, so obviously, as I'm sitting here thinking, I have to talk to Scott about how we're going to use this room, because this is what this room is built for, communication, public, public use of this space. Absolutely.
Oh, you have a stage, really?
Yeah. So there's going to be, there's going to be a lot of this type of stuff done in this room, so we've got to, we've got to sit down and say, how's it going, how are we going to do that best?
See? We kept your point, Scott. There you go. Mark's good.
So, good comment.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. President, before we move on, if we could just recognize, we have two former board members with us, Mrs. Faborski and Mrs. Paletti, just like to recognize them. They put a number of years serving this district as board members, and served this district very well, so just wanted to recognize you ladies.
Thank you. Thank you. Jeff.
Mr. Seltzer, superintendent's report.
Uh, one, you know, a couple of topics that we were talking about previously. One would be the renting of facilities and the cost of renting the facilities. I believe that we probably need to discuss that further, and that probably should take place July 1. I don't know if my recommendation, if we change anything, we do it July 1, because I don't know if it'd be fair to people who aren't already rented or assigned things. And then, I think when we talk about the elementary Spanish programs, we really talk to consider that, you know, as we look at it, and I and Jillian can, you know, weigh in a little bit on this too, if we do elementary Spanish program, I think we have to devote more time to it than what we've had in the past. In order to do that, I think then we have to discuss, if that's something we're going to do, where are we going to get that time from? So I think there's a bigger discussion that we're going to have to have globally, K-12, about our Spanish program, and I just wanted to let you, that's where we are as administrative staff when it comes to our elementary Spanish program. Jillian, if you have anything to add to that?
Well, I just think that effective practices show that immersion is the best way to learn a language, and I think immersion would be very difficult to do, given our current state in terms of the number of faculty we have and the time of the day that we have. So it just, it adds itself to more challenges than need to provide, and it's just something that we have to, kind of have to work here and decide what's most important.
Thank you, Jillian. Anything else?
No.
Solicitors report.
No report.
Thank you, Mr. Seltzer. Okay, at this time, I'd like to approve our minutes from, yeah, I don't have the dates on it, from our last meeting, I should say.
Yep.
1:23?
1:23. So I'd like to get a motion.
They weren't attached. They weren't attached.
They weren't attached. So we left the table, that's the next meeting.
Yeah.
Table, that's the next meeting. We'll move on to our informational agenda. Do we have a report from the Education Foundation representative? I think we had a really good report from you.
Yes.
We sure did.
That's right.
Actually, I'd like to maybe fill in that spot tonight if I could. Mr. Kazinsky and I had the opportunity to spend some time with Mrs. Faborski, who's the president of Education Foundation, and in the recent history, we have not had a real good, not relationship, but communication between the board and the foundation, just for a variety of reasons. Lack of representation, time allotments for people to be on, on the Education Foundation, you know, some, some other varied things that caused us not to have the best communication. But I think moving forward and having our discussions as we have, this is a great opportunity to reset and realign and, and use the abilities of the entire district and the entire community to create a really meaningful relationship between the foundation and the district. And so we're excited about the trivia night, we're excited to lend ourselves in any way to help the foundation become, you know, truly a great foundation in helping educate kids and helping assist teachers, and in reality, and our vision of it may be slightly beyond what your vision states now, but we hope maybe with our, with our input, we can even take your vision from it, okay?
Thank you very much.
All right.
You're all very welcome.
Thank you.
John Gordon, I appreciate your support.
Great. Mr. Kramer, Pathfinder?
Yeah, we had our meeting last Wednesday. Unfortunately, I was on a conference call with the rest of you on the superintendent's search, so I didn't attend that meeting, and I haven't yet received an email with all the information from a board secretary, but I know we are, what I expect to see in that email is the second draft of the budget, so we'll be working through the budget so that we can present that soon. The main issue in that budget, as everyone's well aware of, is the roof. There was a meeting, a special meeting that was held regarding the roof, we had some constant conversation on, and we're still waiting on some contractors to go up and, you know, we had one estimate, we had one contractor go up and give us, you know, preliminary scope and a preliminary bid, but we're going to try and tighten that up and determine whether we can patch and repair for one more year, and, you know, how we're going to go ahead and raise the money or pay for the roof replacement as needed. But I'll, when I get the notes from my board secretary, I'll read through them and, you know, distribute them out to the board.
Thank you. Mr. Cora, Parkway.
I have to apologize, folks, I was unable to attend that meeting, I was at a very special meeting with my board, we were interviewing, so I will have a report next month for all of you.
Thank you.
Shaz, I have for Sandy.
Okay, great, well, thank you.
I told Sandy I'd help her out, we talked about some of that, and I'm going, you know, broadly, the Shaz, the school partner, some of that. So their next meeting is Thursday, March 1st, and it's that first annual student forum, formats changed, the theme, it's showcasing South Hills area schools. Each member of school district has been invited to select a student from various grade levels and share something that is happening in their school that makes them proud, and a few CV students will be participating, and I don't know, Scott, you have anything to add?
I think we have four students. Patrick, we have four students participating in that, correct? Yeah, so, and it's a new format. The past few years, what they did is, they'd ask, they'd give the students a group of questions, and then they would answer the questions about how education is, and then it was really a good opportunity for board members and superintendents and administrators to hear about what the kids thought about the educational process. Now it's sort of changed a little bit, where they're going to show off the kids a little bit. So the kids have a project or a idea that they're going to present to all this, and it's going to be sort of like a, you know, go to different booths, go to a different area, and the kids are going to do their, their project or the thing that they're learning about. So it gives the South Hills area school districts an opportunity to see what other schools are doing, so you get a sort of the snapshot, and then we could, you know, help each other out when it comes to different programs. We're hoping that that spurs more participation from our schools, so really looking for our, you know, our attendance has been, been good, especially with our board members, but other school districts haven't been, so we're just trying to increase the number of schools that are attending to sort of grow that community.
Sandy, email, both of you.
Thank you. Before our public meeting, we did have a finance committee meeting tonight, and Mr. Kazinsky has a report from the finance committee.
We discussed a lot of subjects, very, a few of them we discussed in a lot of detail. The first thing we discussed was our insurance broker had a couple of issues within the last month or so, really questioning whether we're getting the level of service that we really deserve through our insurance broker, so it has been recommended us that we go out to RFP in the not-too-distant future for a new insurance broker. Campus security, near and dear to all of our hearts, we all have kids, most of us have kids in each of these buildings, so we did talk about it at length. We had asked for a list of things that we could purchase or things that could be done. A lot of that, things that we have heard through the public, feet on the ground, surveillance, video, things like that. So obviously, these are tough times, we really want to do everything that we can and be creative, just like everybody else. So one thing that we discussed was putting out for referendum at a vote to see if it would be warranted, people would be up for a millage increase specifically to go towards security, additional feet on the ground, surveillance, things like that. If you look at the list, a lot of it, while some of it are equipment, machines, things like that, a lot of it is personnel costs, which are recurring costs year after year, something that a millage increase would definitely be able to cover. We talked about timing and things like that. Then we moved on, talked about AEDs, needing to purchase additional units, ours that are definitely past their lifespan, and also looking at repositioning them within the buildings. We reviewed the bill listing, we have a new format, and the board was very complimentary to our, to the finance folks as to putting that together. We are also looking at purchasing seven buses and three vans this year, still going to be diesel, other alternatives, natural gas, things like that, still very early, not sure they're exactly reliable for the school buses right now, and we also discussed the size of our bus garage and anything possibly doing something with it in the future. That's it.
Thank you. It was a long meeting, so we apologize for our tardiness coming in here tonight, but there was a lot to talk about. With that being said, as part of the finance committee report, I would like to get a motion to accept the 2016-2017 audit report as presented by Cypher and Cypher at the February 13th, 2018 meeting. The audit report was, was available both that night and through all of our reports, so I hope everybody's had an opportunity to review it, and it was very thorough, and 108 pages, if I'm correct, and we got stellar, stellar comments by our auditor about our business department, how pristine the, the work was, and they did an excellent job of presenting it, so.
I do have one comment before we vote on that. I do have one comment before we vote on that, I was looking at the management letter comments. Last year at this time, we had talked about the concessions and having cash deposited, reconciled, things like that. We talked about how that would be rectified, and it looks like it showed up again for a second year, so I would hope that that would be looked at again, because we certainly don't want to have that show up again. While it certainly is not material to our operations, it's not something that we want to have carrying forward from year to year.
Good call. So we need to take a look at why that was on the report and figure out, okay? So could I get a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Mr. Kozinski, seconded by Mr. Kearney, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Thank you. We will move on to the consent agenda. These are items 6.1, which we are, I think, I believe now we're going to table 6.1, the human resources report. Just part of the, actually, the human resources report, we're going to table the portion related to the musicians of the band, and we're going to investigate some comments made in that area. Yes. Being that the musical is next week, we'll retroactive anybody who is approved, okay? So we're going to just table that one. Everybody else that's on the human resources report will not be affected by that. So please review, questions or comments regarding 6.1 through 6.11.
Right.
And 1.3 is actually included in there as well, 6.12 is deleted.
She said, it's just that section with the.
Yeah, we're just going to table the musicians' section of the musical. Everything else is going to still be in there.
Yeah, I didn't know that.
Yeah. Can we talk a little bit about the bowling, the boys and girls bowling teams postseason tournament teams?
So we do have club bowling, and every year we pay for tournaments that they belong to, and so our boys and girls made the postseason, so we're just paying the fees for that. It's a club, it's not an actual, our sport is a club sport, we do that for some of our club sports. And it's 220 each team, I believe it's 350, allows us up to 350 per team. So we recommend that we support our local bowling club team.
Any questions or comments regarding any of the rest of the consent agenda? All of these items we've thoroughly discussed at some point in time, and everybody's read through them, so I'm comfortable with taking 6.1 through 6.13 and holding in reservation the portion of the human resources report that is related to the musicians in the musical.
6.12.
And 6.12 is deleted.
That's the leader.
Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Kearney?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Kozinski, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Thank you. We're on to our action discussion items. We're going to talk about the approval of Phase 1 Development Change Order Number 2. This would be a motion to approve Phase 1 Development Change Order Number 2 as listed for an add of $2,500.00. Does everybody have an opportunity to read that, read about that? Want to expand on that, anybody?
It's the asbestos.
Yes.
The material that was bombed and.
Yep, it was not, obviously not known until they started to move over, and that's basically what it's doing, that's why it's in there. That's pretty black and white, there's no, there's no real issue there, so somebody would give me a motion to. This person, Murphy, move that? Seconded by Mr. Kramer, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Okay, just a couple of things before we move on to public comments I'd like to make for the public record. The district held a security meeting last night at the auditorium. Mr. Seltzer did a stellar job of pulling together a group of professionals to discuss where we are as a district and how we view security and safety of our kids. I thought it was a very well-done program, it was great to see 85 concerned people in the room, and it's great to see you all here tonight, because we don't nearly see enough of our community members at our meetings. But last night it seemed to be enough of an important issue that we've got a lot of folks in the room. And the comments were great, a lot of them were, you know, very, very much aligned with how we're thinking. As Mr. Kozinski referred to in our finance committee meeting, we put a number to it, we put a number to it, and it's all, it's all about money. At some point in time, everybody wants to be as safe as we can possibly be, and how we can be creative when we do that and be smart about it, it comes down to sometimes dollars and cents and using the resources we have. So, you know, when we talk about going to referendum, we're talking, the number we came up with, with all the suggestions that were handed out last night, almost $2.5 million to put them into place. So, you know, it's an important, important matter to keep our buildings, to keep our kids safe, keep our staff safe, but it also takes money. So when you're out there in the community and you're thinking safety and security, promote the fact that we need the money to do it, and I'm asking you to do that, so keep that in mind. You know, the programs, and I believe, if you were there last night, the program discussed the phasing of how we're going to present this to the students, and it was, you know, very, the portion that's going to be showed to the high school kids is different than the program, it's going to be showed to the younger kids, it's a, I think it's very well-done. Mr. Kelly's going to make sure, along with Mr. McCartney, to get that information out onto our website, so it will be available, if you weren't at the meeting last night, to be able to view what that looks like and how that program's going to work. Mr. Seltzer and I are going to work together in putting a communication together out to the entire district about safety and security one more time. And so I thought it was, it was very well-done. Our principals, our building administrators, a lot of those folks stayed last night, it's important to them as well, and I want to recognize the fact that they, you know, it's a long day for our folks, and they were there last night because it's important and they care. So I just wanted to make those comments in public regarding the security meetings, Scott, if you'd like to add?
Yeah, so I did get a comment today, I did have a community member call me, not upset, but was trying to understand why it took so long for her to get her child to, so, and it was at this middle school. You know, she, she was met by security, by campus safety, before she could turn in, so those are things that we were working on, you know, that was, was nice to hear. When she got to come into the middle school, she had to be buzzed in the front door, she then had to stay in the vestibule while her daughter came to her, so she really didn't even get to go into the office, and this was somebody that the building knew. And so she wasn't irritated, but she was just wondering why, what changed, and a lot of our comments were, well, this is what our building was really starting to design to do, we're just getting that technology available now to get it done. So there are going to be even more additions to this building as it comes to its completion. I really want to thank everybody who showed up last night, it was a great turnout for me, and I appreciate all the efforts, and as I said last night, we can't do it alone. We need the parents, we need the kids, we need the community to come together, and that's the only way we can try to prevent anything from happening. So I'm very appreciative of you coming tonight to voice your concerns, and I'll be glad to meet with you anytime, I know Officer Oznick's glad to meet with anybody, our principals, so if you want to come in and talk to us one-on-one, we'll be glad to talk to you, we'll give you as much information as we can. We can't tell you the entire plan, but we can give you as much information as we have available. But again, I think this community, I said it last night, this community amazes me, our students amaze me, I've been in a lot of buildings, I've been in a lot of districts, where these kids rally around each other better than anywhere I've ever seen. They support one another better than anywhere I've been, and I really appreciate them, our students. And that's what we keep focused, and I always tell our administrators and our teachers and our custodians and our bus drivers and our aides, everybody, our focus is kids, and we're proven in the lives of kids in every aspect of it, and that's what we have to do, and with your help, we'll make sure that we keep that focus and get it through. Thank you again for coming tonight, thank you for all those who came last night.
Then, another comment I wanted to make before we close tonight, the reason we asked for this meeting to be in the commons here tonight is, we want to get the community aware that this space, these buildings, were built not just for students, but for our entire community. We want people to get used to being able to meet in this space, use these spaces as they were designed. So yes, there is a level of security we have to adhere to, but at the same time, we want this, this property and these buildings to be a community space. So along with that, the board also wanted to be here tonight, because this building is getting near completion, and our contractor's going to be going away here shortly, once, once the punch list is done and the final touches are put on. But we want to take a very thorough walk tonight, walk through this building and put our eyes on it to make sure that what we paid for is what we got. So the final touches are what everybody sees, so anytime you're in a building, if you see something that doesn't look quite right, let us know, but that's what we're here for tonight. We wanted to put our eyes on this building at least one more time as a board before we say, hey, we think we're close. And we can, obviously, we're holding back several million dollars before we make that final payment in these guys, to encourage that everything is done according to the way it was designed and built and paid for. So that's the other reason why we're here tonight. Mr. Seltzer has another.
And a special thanks to Nutrition Inc., and you guys can take a few minutes to say, you know, they provide the food for tonight, so it's Nutrition Inc., they wanted to sort of present what our kids like.
Absolutely. What we have this evening is a traditional setup of what the kids see every day. So in the first line, we have our spokes with models, and we've got a professional vetting board set up. On the other side is our new people line that have a laptop eating panel with eat and lunch, and that's certain seats for students, and they have a little, they have it every day, because the kids need them when they get pizza. So they have, I mean, have these, I mean, probably also the first protected movement. But before you see a, but we're all set up here, just what, and we want to demonstrate that to you, and see it's fully functioning, the whole thing's worked out, and it was very good. So we just want to demonstrate that for you, and you might even find a little, and you know, so.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it. Anything else from the community? Okay, can I get a motion to adjourn? Oh, I'm sorry, one more time, public comments, anybody?
Billy Bang.
Hey, good evening, everybody. Julia, so nice to see you.
Oh, thank you, Bill, good to see you too, thank you, Bill.
I just wanted to say, you know, I think our schools are in a great proximity, because if something didn't happen, you have a lot of time to. I've just waited all year, I'm in Rachel, the 3 o'clock right there on 79, you know, I think that we have a lot going for us as far as security, because we have, we're like in federal police, police department, if something happens, you know, it would be like, they would, they would be here in about three minutes, and it just makes you feel so safe. And it was, you know, having officers at each school, you know, it's, it's, these are mine, plus you know that someone's here, and they're not going to sit in the floor and watch them, right? I know all of them, they would be in here engaged and, and I, you know, I can't say enough.
No, could you just tell everybody who you are?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm doing day and night, I'm starting here in the district, I'm in the maintenance department, I'm a plumber and everything, and I have a bus crew, I grab trucks, I get.
CIA.
And I, that bus was open late coming in, but I, I wanted to stop. And something that I want, I saw, I'm bringing your attention, I'm here to leave, but I'm going to go to break, go down north, but I just, contractors today, they put the last B on the high school learning set, and they did it really right, they have American flag on the last B, they have a pine tree that represents, no injuries or deaths on this dog, and they have a light, and everybody, and I know it's going to be spectacular, but I mean, I, but I know that was on American flag, and they should try to be here, and I'm like, you know what, I gotta bring, I got a big, there's no podium, so I had to stand up and say, yeah.
Thanks.
Thanks for reading into our situation. Hope we get some pictures of that.
Rita has one.
Okay, great, great. Anyone else?
Absolutely.
Please.
Hi, so this is my daughter, and I have a daughter in the primary school, and this is my first time, I tend to go morning, so I'm sorry if I'm not following, or whatever. I appreciate you guys making the time to talk to us about the outreach last night, I've always heard, and I'm appearing myself on a meeting with Officer Otlet tomorrow, 5:11 o'clock, discussing bill packets. I wonder how much you all monitor for social media, for Facebook pages, and myself pages, you've got a lot of parents that have your backs as far as whatever reason you guys need. I think all of us as parents are terrified of what happened, and so I think I might have such a question out last night. So if there's anything that we can do, others attending the board with you, what are some of those things that you can suggest to us as parents who helps support you? I know that sometimes communication is lacking, whether it's emails or the going through a project, some people don't have access to the internet, are not getting the communication that maybe they could be getting from you guys. Like I said, I'm new to this, and I want to help as much as I can, but I am one of those parents that are a PTB board member, and I'm just for you guys, however I can, and I know that our questions will come as any concerns about the safety of the safety of this town takes time, but if there's any way that you guys can communicate more to the district and the parents about what it is that you really need, I think you're going to find that donations for these bill packets, for monitoring your nations to get the extra staff, you're going to have that as long as it's communicated a little bit better. So if there's anything that I can really suggest, I'm all yours.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
I have a question, I don't care about safety.
Could you say your name and house in New York?
Long and gone, I think. And my question is, I don't know why they can drag you, have somewhere else to talk about it, and it's going to be March, and I still pray that it's over there, and we have a lot of them, have a tiny idea right now, what to do, if they're making sure they don't know if they find it, if they hide it, and I know the training is coming up, there's pretty much a school plan, like, you should, this is stuff that's talked about, it's a technical, this school's stuff, so you shouldn't take it, drag it, be somewhere else, for always being, happening, that they should know what to do. I'm not saying, you know, I do professional medical records and things, I have money, but simply, how does it hit, these kids just have to know, they have to know what they need to do. I'm terrified from hearing, I don't know what I tell my kids, if I run out of school, run to the campus anymore, nobody tells them, you don't know. So I'm really, really like, I don't know, I'm hungry, we, 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 you know what, it's too late, so you know, they have to know, and I would love to like, you know, keep talking about it, but they don't know. They could pay the money, they have five girls, they know two weeks to hire, but they don't know what to do if they're in the next town, so that's.
Well, we're seeing, I think one of our principals last night spoke to that a little bit. We don't want to send an inconsistent message out, we want to make sure that our message is uniform to everybody, and quite honestly, with new buildings and old buildings, until you really dig down into. it, we didn't know what the message was. We needed to be trained, our staff needed to be trained and our officers that are in these buildings have to rethink about what hap, every, as Officer Oslick said last night, every incident they learn from and they're, they're trying to be better at what they do. So I think as going forward and taking all the information that we have gathered and the concerns of the folks, we will put better programs in place to train our staff, to train our kids. And I think you'll see definite improvement in the message. So just bear with us a little longer, God forbid something would happen between now and then, but we are getting there, the kids are getting trained, but next week's, Scott?
Yeah, next week.
Yeah.
March 5th.
And our staff is in a much better place than it was three months ago with the Alice training. So I think everybody would agree that the message is getting put out there, it's going to be a consistent message and we're going to get the kids where we feel comfortable. And again, I said this last night to my wife when I got home, I know it's an emotional time and it's, my children are beyond the school now, my kids are all gone, but they all graduated from Chargers Valley, but I got home and I just feel so bad because I said, we're really in the business of educating children and not policing them? And I don't want them to feel like that's where we're at. I want them to have that growth of mind and spirit when they come into our buildings, you know? I don't, I don't want them to feel that way. We got to get to a point where we're kind of in that middle zone where they don't feel it, but it's there. And it takes time and it takes money and it takes effort, so just bear with us. Anybody else? All right. We did have an executive session beforehand and I'd like to get a motion to adjourn.
Send the.
Mr. Kearney first?
Second.
Mr. Kopeck second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you all for being here.